The bumps are a couple of different things.
Yeah.
And then like you can come back later and read it different, like. Then this way or you kind of like your thinker's. Now we're just kind of start over.
All right, you two. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Village Planning Commission of Elmont for May 1st, 2025 to order, please. May I have a roll call?
Tereski.
Here.
Meek.
Here.
Zender.
Here.
Dyke.
Present.
Miller. Keller.
Here.
Schneider.
Present.
Thank you. Um, next item on the agenda is communications. Do we have any communications from anybody? No? All right. The next item on the agenda is, uh, the approval. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as it's presented.
It's a moved.
I have a move by Steve and a support by Tim. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried. The next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes for the regular meeting of April 3rd, 2025. They are included in your board packet and unless there are any changes or alterations or corrections, I'd entertain a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I've vetted it and I moved to approve the minutes.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Second. Second from Gary. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried. The next item is public comments. We have a large crowd tonight. I'm assuming, are you all from his, uh, from government class?
Yes, sir.
Yes? We'll try not to make the meeting too long, but you're not leaving till the end.
You have my turn.
Does any, does anybody else have any other comments? All right, we will move along. There is no public hearing tonight. And there's no new business tonight. The next item we have is unfinished business. Um, Kim called me to let me know that my term has expired. And, um, so she's included in the packet, uh, a note there for you that, uh, I would still like to continue on the commission. And I'm requesting that the planning commission, uh, recommend my reappointment, um, for ending March 31st, 2028.
I make a motion to, uh, recommend that the planning commission, uh, we, uh, indicate to council that it wants the reappointment of Tom Tereski, uh, to the Elmont Village Planning Commission.
One second.
I have a motion from Steve, a second from Glenn. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those, all those opposed?
Abstained.
Unabstained. I understand. Um, the next item on the agenda is a bring back from our last meeting, and that is the change in use for 134 North Main Street. And, um, I'm assuming we have the gentleman here who plan on opening up this business?
You do, this, uh, Tim Nowakowski and Doug Davis?
Could you give us, uh, we've, we've received your, uh, business plan. And, but you, you give us a little bit of an overview of what you're planning and that type of thing, if you wouldn't mind, please?
Yeah, sure, absolutely. So Tim here, he's been tattooing for a good 20 years. Um, and he's interested in starting up, um, his own, uh, tattoo shop. Uh, I'm more of just investor. I'm here to be his business partner. So we're 50/50 partners. He'd be running the shop full time. I'm just overhead management, stuff like that. My lovely wife here will be doing accounting for us. Um, and, uh, yeah, so that's it. I know there's not, you know, about 20, 25 minutes as close as tattoo shops. I've kind of looked into them too. They're not really the best shops either. Half the time they're closed when I go buy them, things like that. So I feel that a tattoo shop here in Elmont, right downtown, would do really well.
You're planning on remodeling the building. Are you just, oh, you're not?
We're not touching anything. The only thing we have to do is add possibly a wash sink.
Okay. And about, on a given day, how many people will you have working in there?
Um, I mean, the, the plan for right now is probably myself and then, you know, at least one or two other artists. We could probably accommodate up to like six or seven artists. But typically artists aren't gonna, like, it would be rare that all the tattoo artists are working on someone at the shop at the same time. Like most, most of the time, like the more serious artists are running like a four day week. Um, noon to eight-ish, like scheduled appointment clientele. Like I'm, I'm booked three months out right now. So, I mean, on average, I do two people a day. So, we'd probably have maybe, maybe six to eight people a day. That's employees and customers.
Now, what do you plan on being your business hours, a typical day, or how many days a week will you be open?
Um, I mean, maybe six days a week, Monday through Saturday, um, noon to eight would be the posted hours. Uh, I mean, there's a possibility that someone would be like in there outside of those hours, like finishing a tattoo or like sliding in a little early to accommodate someone. But, I mean, it, it wouldn't affect anything ultimately. Like the doors would be locked. They'd just be doing their thing until they were done.
I see, I see. You, you listed some references, and I know they're farther away. Do you have any local competition around here that you're competing against?
So I know there's a shop in Lapeer and there's also one in Romeo.
The Romeo one, oh, I don't think it's actually open.
Yeah, I mean, I've drilled by it many times. It looks like they're closed down. There's not really any information on them either. That's kind of why they weren't included in the competition.
Now, did you pick those three references for any particular reason?
They're just bigger, well-known shops.
Oh, they are? Okay. Okay. Do any of the members have any questions?
I was just curious why they picked up from the U.P.?
Honestly, I, I fed it into an AI prompt to find the competition that would fit less to what we're trying to achieve. That's what it gave me. So that's probably the only business out there that really had most information online, so. So you.
So you worked in another shop and now you want to.
I've worked in many shops. I currently work at, uh, Dark Horse with Sebastian Murphy. That's the guy from Ink Master. Um, I've vetted 13th Hour with, uh, Mark Tice. He's probably the most well-known one. Uh, I mean, I know all the guys at Eternal. I've tattooed with Bob Terrell a couple of times. Like if any, if, if you guys know any of those people, it's really impressive.
No, no, no.
But, um, yeah, I mean.
So you will be primary operator. You will be, and you're the investor. Okay.
Essentially.
We'd like to get some merchandise in there as well, um, some jewelry and stuff like that. I'd, I'd be there as well.
And then, you know, probably some stickers and t-shirts. I mean, I would like, I'm a, a classically trained oil painter as well as a tattoo artist. So like, there's a lot of like other art stuff that gets generated. But tattoos pay.
Anybody else have any questions?
Are you buying from an owner or is it an open shop for walk-in?
Um, I mean, I, I had a real old school apprenticeship, so you know, walk-ins are always welcome. You know, if you, if you've got cash and are willing to wait, we'll get you a nice stop flag, kind of, kind of thing. But my, myself personally, like, I, I have the type of clientele where, where I'm, I'm booked out and I'll, I'll pass along.
The, the initial idea is to get another artist in there so we could accommodate walk-ins though, so that, that is the plan, yes.
So the competition you cited was Upper Peninsula. You said there was a shop that might be closed in Romeo and one in Lapeer. Of all places, why Elmont?
Uh, yeah, I live right around the corner. My daughter goes to Elmont.
That cute little building right in downtown is going to empty for a while.
And it's right on Banda. The, the traffic alone is, is worth it.
And we've been friends forever and I've been talking about opening my own shop and, you know, just life situations tweak to you. It's like, hey, I have an idea.
And you say you have a marketing strategy a little bit. Explain to me, like, you want to develop a strong media presence. How would you go about doing that?
So I, I actually am, I, I am a web designer and I've owned my own marketing agency for about 10 years now. Um, so I actually handle all that online digital stuff, uh, from website design to handling social media accounts and things like that. Advertising on such platforms. That's really what that means is just making sure we have, you know, Facebook business pages up and our Google business pages up and everything's working and running correctly. That's really what that means. And then possibly advertising on those platforms to try and draw more business.
To be honest, there's, um, living in Elmont, we've lived here for a few years now. I actually grew up in Drennan. There's a lot of events that go on in town and.
That was my next question.
I feel like we'd really like to get involved with the community and just with a lot of the stuff that goes on. You know, I know there's, um, like, don't they do like Bike Week and Jeep, Jeep Nights and stuff like that? I don't know, just getting, you know, involved in the community would be nice.
Yeah, we would definitely take opportunity to be part of the community here. That's, that's, yeah.
We got a lot of tattoos, but we play well with others.
I mean, you know, I could say, I, I read through your entire plan. I found, you know, found it very interesting. You feel those numbers are still pretty good, the ones you put together to start?
I do. I mean, those are all based on averages in Michigan here, based on other tattoo shops. That's what I was able to pull together.
Okay.
It's not 100%. We want to know, right? And honestly, we probably have a couple of years before we start seeing some real profit, but.
Yeah.
As long as we keep that in mind, I think we can make this a success, a successful business here.
Well, to compliment you is one of the more detailed plans we've seen.
Oh, yes.
So.
Very much so. Very detailed. I appreciate that. And I have another, I have another question I have is, do you have an age limit as to who can come in on their own? Without, without parents' permission?
Eighteen and up is, is it's, it's adult, which is why we had like needed variances and stuff because they, I don't know, whatever. But, uh, 18 and up isn't, however, Michigan does not have a like too young date. Uh, industry standard is 15 or 16 with parental consent. That requires photo ID of the parent and the child, a copy of the birth certificate, names all have to match, seal has to be added.
Now, is that all stuff that you have to look at?
What you mean?
I mean, as far as ma- making sure that they have parental per.
Oh, yes. Oh, yeah. Like if, if there's an underage person getting a tattoo at the shop, all that paperwork is done before the tattoo starts. The parent has to be physically present in the building.
Oh, they do. Okay.
All that stuff. And the, the parent has to sign off on the design. Like there's a section where it's, this is what it is, this is where it's going, and you're cool with that. Kind of situation. And then currently, like each shop gets to kind of write their own waiver, kind of situation. And Sebastian has included that, uh, like it's just a clause that if, like, the parents are separated and the other parent has an issue, the shop is still, you know, not involved in that. Like mom said it was cool, so take it up with her, kind of situation. But typically, I don't, I don't like tattooing anyone underage. I have, like, there's enough people over 18, kind of things. Unless they're like related to a customer of mine, kind of situation where I like personally know them. Typically, I'll turn it down. And then, like, as far as shop policy goes, no one under 18 is getting a hand, a face, a knack. Like, like, you know, that's, that's just personal. Like, there's no laws on that. But it's our shop and we get to make the rules. That ain't gonna happen, like.
I see.
Okay, I mean.
Do you have your, um, state body art license from Michigan Department of Health and Human Services?
We need the building and a couple inspections before we can apply for that. So this was the first step in all of that. We'll have to do our inspections and apply for our temporary license. Once we have the temporary license, we can do the, like, install the sink. Is really like the biggest thing because, uh, the health, like, you have to have a clear line of sight or walkability from wherever the tattoo's going on to the sink is, is what it is.
That's why we might have to add a sink or two into the building. But that is the most of the renovation we'll be doing.
Typically, when you, if, if everything goes okay and you reply, how long does it take to get that license from the state?
Uh, I mean, weeks maybe. Like they'll, they'll come and do the inspection. It's either pass or fail. You pay them money and then.
So they will come and actually inspect the whole facility?
Uh, it, it depends on the county. Wayne County is sometimes. Uh, Macomb County around that now every time, like, like.
Do you know what Lapeer does?
I don't know.
You don't.
When I, when I looked up your county, like, it's really lax. Like, like there is not as many rules as there is down in Wayne and, and Macomb and Oakland, which is, you know, primarily where I've been working out of, of until now.
I see.
And there's, there's a lot more out there.
But the state license requirements apply across the state. Um, so as opposed to zoning, which is municipality to municipality. So the state would be maintaining, I believe there's even a regular state periodic component to it as well to ensure public safety and welfare.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, I got one question. So the only thing I didn't see in your guys' plan was, um, do you guys have like a design, what type of sign you're gonna put out front, like, uh, light up or?
We still weren't even on branding, but I think we wanted one of the ones that like hangs because there's a post for it. And then, uh, as far as signed it on the building, like, uh, typically you just have a giant sign that says tattoo.
Yes.
Like, like whatever name of the business usually in the window on a door or like some are cool.
So you're talking about on the side of the building that you're putting a tattoo for you?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, thanks. And again, we would, you know, submit that for approval, right? Everything. We're also looking to go after the grant for the, the easement for Tom, right? So everything will be submitted before we pull trigger, so.
And Nathan, the sign would have to be approved by the zoning administrator per the ordinance, the sign ordinance.
You also mentioned parking in the last meeting too. We're gonna use the public parking. We'll even state it on the website. We'll make sure all customers. Behind the building. We don't, we're not trying to take up a parking spot on Main Street for five hours while tattooing. That's not gonna happen, so.
Caitlin, do you have any questions right there?
I do not.
You do not? Are there any questions from any of the other members that we can think of?
But I have commentary. On the proposal.
Is there, uh, no other questions? Yes?
My commentary addresses that question.
Okay.
So I'm notorious for stating, well, I've been on this planet for stating, well, I've been on this planet almost 82 years. And one of my great accomplishments in life is never getting a tattoo. So, um, that probably is unpopular with you people. Oh, you people. So, uh, yeah, that, so that, that's one of my great accomplishments in life. Um, so we are called the Planning Commission. Planning Commission. And to me, that means what is in the best interests of the village. Complying with all the regulations and ordinances, zoning, sure. The, in terms of what is best for the village, having a tattoo parlor there, um, is, in my view, not in the best interest of the village. And it's fairly well-known fact that Good Grounds, uh, wanted to expand. And if the, uh, commission were not to grant, the likelihood of Good Grounds being able to expand, which would be a real enhancement for the village as opposed to a tattoo parlor. So, and in terms of, as far as whether there's sufficient parking or not, it appears to be somewhat in question from Caitlin's, uh, written, um, opinion provided to us. And in the past, uh, she indicates that the commission has waived the parking requirement. And I am recommending that we, in terms of planning for what's best for the village, that we not waive the parking requirement. So that's my commentary where I stand.
Okay, Justin?
Sure. So, um, like prior to, you know, really agree going forward, like, you know, I, I came up here, like, I mean, we hang out much. But, uh, we came out here specifically to kind of like feel out the market. So I can tell you for a fact that there are illegal tattoos happening in houses in the city. So for the best interest of the community, if, if a tattoo's happening, would you rather someone get that in, uh, someone's house with a cat that's walking through a litter box above the table and then a tattoo and now that person has MRSA? Or a state-regulated controlled facility that you know is safe? And if, if you decide isn't safe, you have an avenue to actually pursue it. As opposed to calling the health department and maybe they'll go bust this person that was tattooing at their house at this time, but they're not now. Uh, I mean, I, I feel like it, it's gonna happen regardless of whether you like it or not. And trying to make it as safe for your community as possible would be a good thing. Not, we're not gonna have someplace we know is safe. Make sure you do that in the alley so that you can get, you know, MRSA type of situation.
As far as the parking goes as well, I mean, there's only so many artists, um, in the building at a time. So there's only so many customers, cars. I mean, at most, what, four cars at a time parked? And that is a very large lot behind those buildings.
Address the issue that I addressed, and I wasn't addressing safety. I was addressing what is best for the village of Elmont as far as our main street is concerned. And a tattoo parlor versus something that would better enhance, um, the village and its downtown area. I don't think we're, we are, um, better off with a tattoo parlor as opposed to a business that is actually more advantageous to the community.
Oh, just, just.
That's a, that's, that's my, my, I'm stating my opinion. Uh, and maybe nobody else agrees with that. That's fine. But that is my very strong opinion in terms of what best for the village.
Tattoos are personally not my style, but a couple of points. I think the stigma of what a tattoo parlor was 20 years ago compared to today has changed. The, the reputation of people having tattoos is, is almost standard normal society now, too. Three, we have two, we have a local person here that's local to Elmont wanting to invest in Elmont. And a building that has sat empty, on empty for years. Literally, literally, and, and wants to be involved in the community.
Oh, it wasn't empty for years. Since we've lived here. Miss, um, Feinberg. Just add. Right, it's there, right. About six months ago.
But that said, I think we have a legitimate business that, that doesn't really bring a stigma that much anymore to the community. They're willing to be involved within the community in its events and invest in the community. And I don't think the parking's an issue. That, that church parking lot back there is empty most days. And like they said, there, the impact of how many people are gonna be coming in on that building on a daily basis is small anyways.
Yeah, four cars at most would be in that lot for our business. Well, the other thing is too, is when, um, the coffee shop opened next door. We never addressed the parking issue with that business either. We just didn't.
They draw a lot of people.
Pardon?
They draw a lot of people.
Oh, on certain days, you can't find a place to park anywhere around that coffee shop. The, the street is parked up, the parking lot's parked up.
You go down Main Street at Thursday afternoon, at, at 11:30, 12 o'clock in the afternoon, place is packed.
And Saturdays, you can't get in the place on Saturday. But the point I'm making, Steve, is when that shop opened up, we, we never had an opportunity to address the parking issue with that particular business either.
Approving this is going to actually do a detriment to downtown Elmont. That's what I'm saying, especially if you, if you reference what I indicated during my earlier comments in terms of what would actually enhance the community.
Oh, I'm pretty sure Good Grounds, they had spoken about purchasing that building.
Tough, it's not selling.
That lawyer who owns the building is not interested in selling the building.
Yeah, I, yeah, I've actually discussed this. I, I talked to the coffee shop first. I was like, who owns the building next door? They, they're the ones appointed me to where I could talk to them.
I don't think that they're wanting to rent it from them.
No, there are other plans that they have, which would enhance that establishment as opposed to it being a tattoo shop. That's my argument.
So you'd rather wait for something that might happen than something that's ready to go?
Mr. Chairman, I, I think we want to keep the deliberation at the panel.
Does anybody else have any comments? No? Well, we should probably put, at least put a motion on the floor as to whether or not we want to approve this change in use or not.
Change in use is specific to the parking, correct?
Say that a different way?
The change of use is specific to the parking requirement, correct?
Um, so the change in use is because the previous use was something other than what we would consider that non, um, that essential, um, beauty salon types, personal service establishment. And because it's.
But I thought in reading your memo that it's, they all fall under commercial, so there's no standard change there. That the only thing we were actually making a decision on was the park.
Correct. I would argue that that is a similar classification.
Right, we don't, we don't really need to make a change of use for the classification itself because it's already, it already.
So it's in the same classification, but it says, I believe it's or change in use can bring it back to this board. And so it is considered a change in use. It would not be a change in classification, um, as part of the use. And so I would say you would want to consider the motion to be for both, um, is that you approve the change in use for the tattoo shop at 134 North Main, um, and you would waive the parking.
The irony, irony is that for decades, that was a public service building. Lawyer, chiropractor, on and on. They were all, it was all service. Uh, I, excuse, yes, it was all services. And that brief time went for about a year. It was a t-shirt shop. And so although, all those years they went by, and because somebody was in there for a short period of time, uh, we have this in front of us.
The t-shirt shop didn't come before us when it changed from.
Doesn't make sense why it's even in front of us.
Uh, we can, we can talk about the nuance of the change in use interpretation after we process this application. If you'd like, we can go a little bit more into that, um, because I do have the eight-year history on that, but.
That was one of the questions that really came up at our last meeting.
I did watch it.
Was, was whether or not, I guess the definition, we're looking for a definition of change in use. Is a change in use even categorized by anything in one category? Or is a change in use when you go from one category to another? And we couldn't answer that question at our last meeting. That's the reason that.
So I still don't know if I have the answer to that question.
Pardon?
Yes.
I still don't know if I understand that part because as Steve said, it was a service building before. It went to a t-shirt shop, which is retail. That didn't come before us.
No.
Now, now it's back before us for a change of use to go back to what it was before. So except for the parking, I don't understand why this is even before us.
Or should it be? Should it, should it, should all of those changes come before us? That's the question. Because you can go within the commercial category. There are 35 or 40 different uses of, of the buildings in those categories. When you change from one to another, is that a change in use even within the commercial category? I can understand if you're going from commercial category to a different category, but we're under the same category, which is commercial. So the definition of change in use is we're going from whatever that building was to a, to a building for, I mean, to a use for personal purposes. Or any of the other ones that fall within the same commercial category. Should all of those have come to us as far as change in use? And I don't know the answer to that question. That was the reason.
So, so I do, I did recommend to the city manager this come to the planning commission as a change in use. Um, and so that's, that is why it is in front of you tonight. And then the other component is that parking. Um, I think it may be in best interest for the applicant. We discuss their application. If there is a pending motion, make that motion. And then we can deliberate further on that specific policy choice, but let the applicant at least move forward.
So has that agreed with everybody? At least moving that direction?
But that's the part I don't understand because if we're making a motion and we don't understand what the policy is, then how can we make a motion? I'm totally confused. And if we, if we're asking this of them when it hasn't been asked of in the past, where's the precedent to make them go through this change?
So it has been asked in the past, um, at least since I've been your planner for the last eight years. Um, however, how formal that process was is definitely changed from manager to manager. Um, so some of them have been more of a, it's been on the agenda. They mentioned.
So is a better interpretation is, is the manager's previous, we're acting as the zoning administrator and just approved it and then, and.
They felt within, sometimes it would come to the planning commission and it was more of one of those, so-and-so is changing from this to this. Do you generally agree? And that they would have a general consensus and they say, yes, we generally think that's okay. And then we would move on. We never made it a formal action item, um, in the past. Some managers, again, they would call me and we'd say, it's from this to this. Is that a change in use or not? And I would say yes or no. And so, yes, some of it is administratively, a zoning administrator saying, I don't consider this a change in use. It's consistent. And other times it's been mentioned, but never very formal. And this recent application, I recommended it be formal and we continue to process them formally.
Forward?
Correct, as this, because of how your current ordinance is written. I think it makes sense to do it that way. Is there historical precedence to be more, um, not an official business? not an official business item, but under city manager's comments, that's how it's been processed in the past. And I didn't necessarily think that was the best way to do it.
That, that makes clearer zones.
So then what you're saying, clarify for everybody then, is if we take the commercial category, major category in the, in zoning, we have all these businesses, if one business is changing from one to another, it comes before us, is that what you're saying?
That's considered a change in use.
That's considered a change in use. So, if zoning, if we're changing from one business to another, that process has to come before us, that's what you're saying?
Correct.
Is that agreed with everybody?
Yep.
It makes sense, does it, is that agreed with everybody?
Yep.
It makes sense, does it not? Then, then change in use, no matter what, boils down to any time somebody is changing one business to another, whether or not it's the same category or not, comes here. Now we understand, I think we do. Steve, you understand that, as far as that?
Or...
And I can go more into it after we process this application.
Do I understand it, yes? Is that the best route?
Oh, I, I understand your argument, yeah, I understand your argument.
Very questionable.
I understand your argument. So then, and then with that process in mind, are, then are we in a position to at least entertain a motion? We have enough information, does anybody have any questions? Then I will entertain a motion to, uh, for a change of use for one thirty-four North Main. Do I have a motion?
Are we gonna, are we making separate motions on the change of use and the parking?
Should we wait, make it all in one motion?
You can do it all in one motion.
And waive the parking requirement? Then do I have a motion to do that, too, for a change in use for one thirty-four North Main and waive the parking requirement? I have a motion, do I have a second?
A second.
Gary seconds. Is there any other discussion from any of the members? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Did we, did we have a majority? We had four?
Motion carried.
Motion carried. Now, let's get, so you are, at least you have a change of use for the building.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Fantastic, thank you.
We wish you good luck.
Appreciate it.
All right, Caitlin, let's get back at this now and figure out what, exactly what we're talking about.
Sure, um, so from a policy standpoint, you are extremely unique in the fact that every change in use or change in category comes to your Planning Commission. Um, specifically when it's a permitted use or use by right. The reason you have uses by rights versus special land use is because you consider customary. So in a commercial district, it's not odd to have a retail establishment, so it's permitted. Same thing with a grooming salon, as opposed to something that could cause a nuisance, like a drive-through, you can have more traffic, you can have more sound and lights based on the hours of operation. That's when you have it a special land use. So that's common, again, when there's nothing physically changing on the site either. The zoning permit is a faster, more efficient way to process changes, and so, and to verify compliance. If they're doing additions or things of that nature, that comes in front of you as a Planning Commission as well, because it's site changes. Um, so, for a lot of different communities, so if you go to, um, Emily City, or you go to the city of Lapeer, change in uses is a trigger for an administrative check to make sure that that business is operating. Some communities, like Lapeer, go a step further and say it's not just a change in use, but it's a change in occupant. Um, and that's partly due to ensuring that compliance is met at every step of the process. Um, and so that's what some communities do. The terminology of change in category is extremely unique because that's so broad. In a downtown setting, you typically don't have industrial uses. So a change in category would be very, um, uncharacteristic. Um, in a lot of our downtown situations, when you cross a threshold of category from residential to commercial, that's not uncommon, but it's usually been residential for a long time, and so you don't, again, you don't see that change as much. Um, so that's kind of your general policy premise, I said, would say, and so it's up to you, every community's allowed to structure their rules and processes, what makes sense for your community. Many communities, um, back in the day, to keep it a small-town feel, to keep a level of control and understanding of what's going on in the community, did require change in uses to, in the intimate downtown setting, to have a regular check-in, not just by one staff person, but by a board, um, and that's probably why your policy was what it is, to have the Planning Commission review it. Many jurisdictions since then have changed that, um, to be more administrative, because it's a permitted use, um, you have the technical components in which you can verify different components to see if there's gonna cause an issue.
So if most towns are going to administrative, why are we going away from that and going to board drift?
Um, we just haven't changed it. So I don't know that we've gone away, and we're, we're just behind, is what I would say, is that we just haven't changed this policy. You've had this policy at least over the eight years, and we did update the zoning ordinance, hmm, six years ago, something of that nature. Um, I don't remember that being a flag of something that we were concerned about processing, um, because as I've worked with your different city managers, when we get this call, every time you've had a different manager, what does this mean, and when do I need to be doing what processing? And so it has been some level of confusion, but we've navigated it without needing to necessarily make a text amendment change. And so, um, majority of the managers that I've worked with in time, when we talk about this provision, what they've done is during city manager comments, they've mentioned, well, this is changing from this to this, are you okay with that? Um, and so I remember institutionally, that has happened as a step, but it's never necessarily been a formal item on the agenda, when there's been a change in use.
So that presentation, does that tie into what I believe is also before us, um, with regard to, uh, whether any of these, addressing any of these issues is to come to the Planning Commission, is not left to the zoning administrator? And we, I believe, and by a majority vote of Planning Commission, we can have all those prospective changes coming to us, quote, the Planning Commission, as opposed to leaving it to the zoning administrator, i.e. the manager. So, so I do, I, I, if that's what's on the table, I wanna make a motion that any such changes in, uh, use, um, uh, come before, uh, the commission. So we would be reclaiming the responsibility of reviewing substantial changes in uses via required site plan. I'm making that motion.
Do we have a second to that motion?
I'll second.
You second?
Yep.
Any further discussion? Does that, does it make sense to all the members on the committee? What it does is basically...
Well, it clarifies the process going forward, so there's no gray zone.
It does.
At what point do we step in?
Anytime there's a change of use.
So anytime there's a row change.
Wait, wait, what is there a change in use?
So it's whenever something changes from one row to the other row. So if the tattoo parlor that was just approved becomes a nail salon, that is in the same use classifications, it's in the same row, that's still considered a personal service establishment. If it goes into retail, which is a separate category, or separate row, that would be a change in use. If it goes from that to a restaurant, it's a change in use. If it goes from a Mexican restaurant to a American food pub, that is not a change in use, it's still a restaurant, just changed cuisines.
Restaurant.
So for example, if it goes from a restaurant to a law office?
Yeah.
Correct, change in use.
Then it comes.
If it...
Then it comes here.
If it goes from a law office to a medical office, change in use.
For them to open?
And if, if you, if you have a restaurant and the building closes and they wanna put it in the law firm, that's a change in use, that has to come here, has to be approved here. That's what we're defining tonight. We're making it clear that when there are changes in use, they will have to come, they will have to come here to get approval before going forward. Yes, and we're all agreed.
There was a motion, there was a motion, there was a motion on the table, so we need to take a formal vote.
What was your motion again, please, Steve? Kim, did you get it? Or you did, could you read it back for us, please?
That any change in use come before the commission.
Okay.
Nathan second.
We have a second? You second. Any other discussion from any of the members? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried. Now we've defined change in use, a little better than we had before.
And the nice thing is, is that all of our uses do have definitions. So it is, from a technical standpoint, it should be more or less easy to determine when is it one case or when is it another case.
Okay, very good. I lost my... Where am I at?
At a tournament.
I think that was it, that's the last item, oh, here we go, all right, we finished up then. Anybody have anything else? You students have anything to say?
No, sir.
What'd you think of the meeting? Are you all going to get tattoos now?
Yeah, yeah, I bet you are.
Well, give them a chance to open, they're not ready to open here. Give them a chance to open.
You talking, are we gonna go to the intervention before we start the next two hours?
Yeah. This is only part one, we have two more hours to go, so sit tight. Your teacher even gave us an oral quiz that we have to answer. Actually, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
It's a move.
We have a second?
Support.
Support. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carried, we are adjourned.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.